So we'll do the oral roll call. I'm Mark Doty, Vice Chair. Mary Tomlinson's not going to be with us tonight.
Richard Cormier.
Robin Ture.
How it's going?
Great first thing.
Jeff?
Jeff, true.
Melanie Westing, HBCOM.
Steve?
Oh, Steve Gould.
Yep.
Here for a project.
Yep.
Oh, I'm sorry, Melissa Curtis.
Thank you.
Concur.
That's all. And we've got three on Zoom. Okay.
I make a motion, we approve the minutes from the line for the third.
You want to waive the reading also?
Yes.
Okay, that'd be great. Got a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing done. All those in favor of approving? Any opposed? Nope, unanimous. Okay, moving on to old business. Jeff?
I'm still taking.
Simply Storage.
Hang on a second, I'm still taking it all. Um, let's see, Missy. Okay, so Simply Storage, we've been waiting for financial responsibility. I've talked with the Loaning Institute and it seems to be good to go with them. However, they're waiting for now, waiting on word from her accountant. And I've talked with her and she is also waiting on word from her accountant.
Okay, so that's capable for now, or still capable. Next up, subdivision, can a Missy Curtis? Want to join us at the table, Steve?
Lovely view. So the party here's an application, we're in full-size plan and talk there. Self-professional. My name's, oops, sorry. My name's Steve Gould, I own Sack and a Break Survey, and tonight I'm representing Ken and Missy Curtis on the division of land on the Blackwell Hill Road. Basically, it's kind of a subdivision in that it's basically a two-lot subdivision, three buildings. Right. But the Arbor lot was the first one out, so that's, that would mean it's exactly.
How long ago was that sold? February 20th, 2021.
It was basically, it was sold... It was basically sold the same time as the rectangle all up below it, but it was the previous deed, so it's the first one out.
But it's within five years.
Right, but they're allowed to sell one lot within a five-year period. If we bring them in now, they got mortgages tied to this, so I don't... I mean, they didn't pick on the determiners of the subdivision and did all that, and it was the first lot out. That's my opinion.
But, well, it's still separated within a five-year period.
You can use it for the pound, but I consider it not part of the subdivision. Because the first one out is that. That'd be one.
It actually creates two by the book. The first lot out creates two. So you got the original lot, unless you got the first lot out.
Correct. Right, but the first one out would be, is essentially one and five.
Yeah, sure.
So that's my interpretation of where it's going.
So there's basically two lots here that we're looking at. The Arbor Lot and the BWH LLC lot.
Right, lot two, which Ken and Miss is still on a portion of that, but that is going to be the BWH, making that lower half contiguous, now BWH.
The lower half being?
The southern, southern lot, lot two.
Lot two. And what is lot one, the 1.111 acres? Is that?
That's lot one of the references appointment. None of this is straightforward, so I'm trying to make it as transparent as I can. Basically, in 2020, we did a plan showing two lots, lot one and lot two.
Yep.
So that's lot one from the 2020 plan. The rectangle of the square.
Okay, and the Arbor Lot was lot two of the?
Yes.
So we've accepted the fact that this falls under subdivision.
Correct.
And from this point forward, we need to satisfy all the requirements of subdivision.
Right, as you guys said, I think you guys talked about, I mean, I think I filled out the application in here and those. Been a lot of it, like the stormwater stuff, it's all built. There's nothing more to add, so there's really no reason to address them. So that's one thing that you'll see when we last reviewed this.
Okay.
Just remember that.
Yep. Good, John?
Am I correct that BWH LLC are the Ken and Missy?
So we've been to this point? Everybody?
And what really triggers this is the buildings, these three houses.
Yep.
Which none are being sold privately, they're being retained by the Curtises.
Lot one will be sold. The current resident. Will be for me.
And the new one hasn't been built yet, right?
The one that's also done.
So it's falsely done?
Two-thirds done. It's been permitted by the town. And there's actually a house laying up on the Arbor lot that the foundation for.
So was the building permit issued by the town for the new Curtis house that triggered, brought us into subdivision?
When I went to inspect, I was like, wait a minute, how does we get it?
Yep.
Well, it didn't trigger it. Jay did it, signed it, homemade a bill, just then going back to review.
Yep.
That triggered it.
Yep.
So we're culpable.
We're accepting that.
100%.
Yep.
Issuring a building permit and saying, go ahead and build.
Correct.
They haven't violated any statute, so there was a silent trigger.
It's what?
There was a silent trigger, it happened. Yes.
Right, it happened without notice.
Right.
Until review. Yep. Okay. So is this pre-application or application?
It should be application, I agree.
Pre-app. It looked like the pre-app met the requirement.
Did you send it out the last meeting?
Think so, but yes.
Oh, you should have read the minutes.
I don't want to be upset like that. So did we go through SD one last meeting?
SD one, yes. Yes, we went through, we had one of the needs and then we had a few questions even between.
Yep.
And we were good.
Okay.
Yeah. Yes.
Well, just wanted to get to it.
Yes, no problem.
Mary's got the official record. But SD two is new tonight?
Yeah.
Okay, folks, want to read down to SD two?
Um, Steve, on SD two, are you looking for waivers such as the groundhog, private Are you requesting waivers for this project if yes please provide the details? Please respond on waivers you request.
I don't know if I...
You get your money out of it, Ken.
They really didn't ask for waivers, they just said they weren't applicable.
Hence, they leave, correct?
I didn't physically know your law.
Well, do we want, well, I guess I'm looking for a list of things that you like excluded from this, that we won't need to provide in this project, so I could say.
Well, definitely that, the, uh... I guess the topographic plan. I mean, I have it, I just turn that layer on and it sits on the bottom, so it's locked
Steve, is any of this in Truro, or fireman, is that there?
Uh, I don't believe it's in Truro. Must not be, because he didn't have it.
So you didn't fire this at all?
The package was in Truro, it was sold 20 years ago.
Does that affect your date? My wife, your wife?
Right, it's basically off field, there's some woods in the back, but...
Then I see SD two is complete, he has completed the issue. I see SD two as complete, okay?
Everybody concur, or you have any questions?
Yes.
Okay. Reviewing SD two complete. Moving on to SD three, subdivision flat map. Date, title, scale, military name of project. Boundary outlined, dimensions, lot area. Names and addresses present, and a parting landowners. Existing buildings, other structures, fire hydrants, streetlights, utility pools, indoor Utility pool, Steve?
Underground.
Yep, underground. Even out on Blackwell Hill?
That connects there somewhere, I do not show the call.
So all the tower there is underground? Location of existing topographic and natural features, he said we don't have topographic. Triggered streams, other water bodies, lettings, burn pools, floodplains, critical natural areas, high-value plant name, habitat, identified by him now. Done? No streams even?
Uh, not in the development area.
Only when it rains. It's always cloudy.
There's a downhill away from the road?
The road, well, swaps to the road.
Swaps to the road.
And swaps down that way.
And it looks like dimensions, location of all proposed internal lot lines. Got the location map? I didn't have that as well. All existing and proposed right-of-way easements?
Those are in there. Didn't want to dis-easement one, dis-easement two.
So those streets, I think they're all in now?
They've been existing for a while.
Yep. Sidewalk, park north, water, drainage structures. And the roads have been in for a while and they're functioning?
Yeah, when you guys both were driving, going into the main house, a few years ago?
Oh, Lord. Uh, maybe like 22 years ago, so probably about the other one, so maybe 19, 20 years ago.
72? No, 20 years.
19, 20 years ago.
Water supply wells, septic system?
Each house has a lot inside it.
I did not, did not location. So no civil landowners on any? So are you going to update this to include those things?
I can unless you plan on approving it tonight, because you can.
I don't think per ordinance we can approve it tonight, we just would call it.
I would make a pro that we accept, SD three would be amended changes.
Everyone concur? Oops. Just because I'm done, why?
It doesn't affect the Massacre, the Law District, it doesn't affect the Sanitary District, it doesn't affect the Fire Chief.
Right.
The Road Commissioner or the Sheriff's Office.
I agree with that. Everyone concur?
Two seconds.
We're going to hold the vote at the end, Jeff. Okay, so SD five, we've got reference in the back. Could explain it further. So evidence of the quality and quantity of proposed water supply.
Private laws.
Benning?
Private laws.
Private laws. Private sewers? Yep, private sewers. Do we have all the subsurface wastewater disposal? Landscaping plan indicating grade change, vegetation to be preserved, new plantings used to stabilize areas of cut and fill for screening. That's C. Landscaping will not be altered significantly from existing conditions. Stormwater management plan, including location, elevation, layout of test basins and other surface and subsurface drainage features. D, no additional impervious area will be created from existing conditions. Was 10,000 square feet or more created with the latest house? Usually they're like 2,500 square feet, plus the driveway.
Right, I do not, I would go with that. The driveway's existing, right? Rule is 20 years old.
Right, true.
I mean, that's the house.
Kind of existing. Yep, okay. Topographical plan, two-foot intervals.
I'll show it later next time, I do apologize for that.
That's okay.
F isn't applicable.
Say that again?
F isn't applicable.
Yep.
So I got a question on that.
Shoot.
Is that erosion control plan that's within the Lake, Westerunset watershed, or do you need a phosphorus control plan put in there? I was a little confused on that.
I would say that an erosion control plan is required, and if you're within the Lake Westerunset watershed, a phosphorus plan is required.
I didn't do erosion, because everything is existing, so it's basically...
How will you change the regen map?
I'll make a note for later revisions.
Thank you.
The estate recently updated the phosphorus numbers for Lake Westerunset, so you could see where that would only be applicable with Westerunset.
So as far as the erosion control, I mean, it's basically, they created the roads, but it's huge gas buffers alone.
Yep. And there's not a whole lot of more disturbance that's going on?
No. I hope you can plan on building.
Um, the Arbor's, they would just have to put in the subject action, that's it.
Okay, plans, profiles, cross-sections, roads, driveways, and parking areas, proposed to be added to the site, so everything is existing. Identification of soils with severe or very severe limitations for type of development proposed, or any severe?
No, I had a tax in store, I was pointing.
Right. Does it speak to severe soils?
Well, it would, it doesn't, though.
Filth loans, fine sand.
That's all silting loans. Fine sand.
And it would be identified on here if it was severe? Locations of any critical areas, natural or cultural resources. You said nothing. Round block for these.
Floodplains, I didn't include the...
Say that again?
Mentioned floodplains, I didn't include the flood map.
Construction schedule, cost, performance guarantee arrangements, along with appropriate statements approved financial capability and a statement of relationship between developer, design consultant, and project contractor.
Can I mention that?
Yeah, I think that's appropriate. I think this is really, um, pointed at larger projects that involve public resources. Anything else that we would deem necessary?
I do have a general question. By approving this subdivision, we're only approving these lots, they can't then just subdivide again, right?
Well, we can, we're in charge.
Right, without coming back.
Correct.
We're approving what they've done.
Yes. You're approving the two lots.
Yep, we're not approving the six more, without coming back. Cool, good, thank you.
And the reset date? Is when they got the building permit or when they get, oh, I did get the subdivision.
Well, forever, I mean, lots one and two will be a subdivision. So anytime they revise it, I'll have to come back in front of you folks.
Doesn't sunset after five years?
It doesn't. All the town sector does, but it doesn't.
So if they want to develop the back forty, lot two, probably got to come back, you know, divisions a subdivision, go back, cool. We don't have to all start again.
Okay, we're on to... Section 13, SD six. 13-1, will that result in undue water or air pollution? I would say that's correct. Has sufficient water available for the reasonably foreseeable needs of the subdivision. I think that's correct. Not causing unreasonable burden on an existing water supply. Yep. Will not cause unreasonable soil erosion or reduction in the land's capacity to hold water. Yep. Will not cause unreasonably highway or public road congestion. Okay, that's correct.
Not unless they have a family in the neighborhood.
What's that?
Not unless they have a family in the neighborhood.
Which, which we can't don't regulate, so you guys. Will provide for adequate sewage waste disposal. In order to prove that these towns has approved subsurface. Will not cause an unreasonable burden on the accountability of disposing solid waste. Oh, that's correct. Will not have undue adverse effect on the scenic or natural beauty of the area. Aesthetics, historical sites, significant wildlife habitat, or rare or irreplaceable natural areas. Or any public rights for physical or visual access to the shoreline.
Long as you're not putting up soul pounds.
Say that again?
Long as you're not putting up soul pounds.
We're not.
Is in conformance with all town and Madison ordinances, prompted to plan development plans for use planes. I would say that's correct. Has adequate financial and technical capacity. Sing out if anybody disagrees. Thirteen eleven doesn't apply. Thirteen twelve. It will not, groundwater. Based on federal Texas Department of Communications flood, downriver flooding maps. You said the flood map there outside of the flood plain?
Oh, yeah.
All freshwater wetlands have been identified.
There are, I mean.
There are.
Top of the world.
All foundland within the proposed subdivision has been identified. And there is none?
There is.
In river stream, upriver, within or abutting, the proposed subdivision has been identified on county maps, and may be part of the application. Subdivision will provide for adequate stormwater management. Today lots are prohibited, doesn't apply. Long-term cumulative effects of proposed subdivision will not unreasonably increase the rate of funds. And proposed subdivision that crosses municipal boundaries, not applicable. Timber on the parcel. Timber been harvested recently? Five, ten years?
Fifteen, twenty.
We're complete except for those three additions to.
And I would suggest that we waive SB seven, which is just a fringe thing.
We kind of did, but.
Yep, officially, yep. I would make a motion if this application is complete.
Second for those three things.
Second.
Okay. Got a motion and a second, that the application is complete. Fall in favor? Complete?
So are you gonna call the public here?
Yes.
You want a public hearing? We have a public hearing.
Ten, twenty days after the planning boards determines that the application is complete, and before taking final action there on the planning boards, uphold the public hearing.
First question?
Yep.
Can we waive that?
Don't believe you can, because public participation, public hearings are, I believe, technically part of the state subdivision law. But I can confirm that.
And it does say shell.
Think your ordinance is different than a lot of them. Because other towns do have the wood. You have not got a shell.
I can look into it, I'll look into it.
Drop down if the language change. I'm just saying, we should have options, if we can, in a unique situation.
In Skowhegan, I don't believe with subdivision, you can do a staff review, but with site review, there's minor, and then there's major. And you can do.
Well, if we gotta have it, we gotta have it.
What you guys meeting?
Pretty much.
What's your editorial comment?
She can, I already said that, I know what she.
No, I'm, listen, I'm so grateful, whatever happens, happens.
Two weeks, that's all.
August twenty-seventh.
Yeah, I did that for Steve, not for you, I'm sorry.
No, listen, I'm fine with it. I would see the house ready, put it on the market next spring, but. Once the divide is ready to roll.
What papers? Twenty-seven?
Time is that moving? Oh, you mean six thirty now, or?
Six thirty.
Weren't they like six and seven or something?
He used to be.
Someone to say, someone to say, are we experimenting along?
That's right, we gotta clean these off, did you want that?
And we split the difference, Stephen.
What's that?
We split the difference.
Yeah, no, that's fine. This doesn't show much.
Mark, did I ask?
This is old, ignore this. Do you want me to do more?
I don't need more paper, thank you.
I keep the nation reading this one. Thank you all.
Thank you very much.
Have a good night.
Thank you so much.
Okay, next up is reviewing the proposed ordinance, chapter one eighty, drugs and drug care, from articles one and two. Will contain any comments? Denise, do you have any comments?
Denise, do you have any comments on chapter one eighty, before we get started reviewing?
Is that a no or a no answer?
It's not, I'm not the fool right now. My computer's on, but I'm not the fool.
I was about to say.
God bless it.
Well, he does have to pull. Denise, if you want to make any comments, now's the time, but you can come on anytime, and let us know what you think. Okay, I'll indicate your comments. On article one.
Just to confirm, we have, we're all looking at the same draft, this is the one with seven twenty-nine, two thousand twenty-four at the top?
I'm glad you said that, because I really want to compliment you on adding that in.
Yeah, that was a Denise comment, so, but yes. Just so we're all on the same page.
Yep, good. Seven twenty-nine, twenty twenty-four.
One of them's in red, and the other one is blue.
Yep. So we're on the red one, article one. So I've, I've got a couple of questions, Melanie, Melanie, if you'd like.
Yeah.
What's the difference between adult-use cannabis establishment and cannabis establishment?
Oh, gosh. That's a very good point.
Mark, what is your question?
What's the difference between adult-use cannabis establishment and cannabis establishment? They're both in the definitions. They're the first and third definition.
That's a very good point.
So I'll, I'll follow this up with, this is an adult-use cannabis establishments ordinance. And we regulate adult-use cannabis establishments. However, we don't regulate, it appears, cannabis establishments.
That's a very good point.
Okay.
So I'm gonna get rid of the second, the cannabis establishment.
I would think so, because I didn't find it really.
Melanie, the only thing I would say is if you're gonna get rid of the third one, you want a testing facility put into an adult-use cannabis? Because they have testing facilities in cannabis establishment?
I think I have it at the end of adult use as well, or adult-use cannabis testing facility.
Yep.
Ah, okay, thank you.
Yeah. I think the, the problem was, is I also had definitions in article two as well, and it just seemed redundant, so I ended up just smushing them all into.
That's what I thought, because there are no definitions in article two.
Yeah, and it just, I must have missed it.
So we're getting rid of cannabis establishment.
Also. Cultivation facility? Because it's to prepare and package adult-use cannabis, sell adult-use cannabis products. But it's to sell cannabis plants and seeds to other cultivation facilities. So you can purchase cannabis plants and seeds in other cultivation facilities, and cultivate, prepare, and then package adult-use cannabis. So it doesn't have to be adult-use cannabis when you purchase it.
Right.
And it doesn't have to be adult-use cannabis when you sell it to other cultivation facilities.
Good point. So for cultivation facility, get rid of references to adult use under that definition?
I don't know, or added into everything. Because this is an adult use. I don't know if, if what we're saying here is that a cultivation facility in Madison can purchase plants and seeds, and then prepare and package adult-use cannabis? And then sell their byproducts, which are plants and seeds, to other cultivation facilities? Or is it just prohibited?
I noticed, like, just because I'm down to work, the sign says, selling clones. I'm not a cannabis person, but I believe that is a plant off of another plant.
Yeah.
So they're selling baby plants to the public, too. So I, to reiterate exactly what you're saying, see, they are selling clones and seedlings, like you go to the greenhouse and buy a little tomato plant.
Yep.
So is that, is that in there? Again, English is not my, that's for you to ponder.
And once again, once again, you get to one eighty dash four, prohibition on adult-use cannabis establishments. Adult-use cannabis establishments, including the stores, the cultivation facilities, the product manufacturing facilities, the cannabis testing facilities, and social clubs are expressly prohibited in this municipality. So the definition of a cultivation facility, I'm kinda.
I wonder if it, does it make more sense then to define adult-use cannabis establishment, medical-use cannabis establishment, and then get rid of adult use and medical use within the different establishment definitions? So then it can be more fluid throughout the, your concern.
Hospital.
It is, in state statute, is there adult-use cannabis establishments?
Yes.
Yes?
This is partially where I tried to draw a lot of those definitions from, but.
And if we don't have, if something's not covered under adult-use cannabis establishment, can it operate in the town of Madison?
No. So, I mean, if something's not covered under adult use, so anything adult use wouldn't be able to operate in Madison anyways, period. Because Madison hasn't opted in to adult use.
Okay, Madison what?
Has not opted in. And this is just explicitly kind of stating that. If, and this is what Denise is holding, the reason we are, is Denise trying to speak? The reason that we're trying to kind of create the second part for allowing medical is because unless we specifically create an ordinance or put an ordinance allowing medical, the shops that are existing will be illegal. Part of the state law is come December. So I think that's why we need to create that specific language. I'm giving everyone a headache, I apologize.
So this is. This is three pages saying, no adult-use cannabis establishments. And I think we just need to be careful not to get tripped up. Because there's so much language here, when it could be done in one sentence, but.
Sometimes less is more.
Yep, sometimes. So. Should the cultivation facility, since we're regulating adult use, should the cultivation facility be an adult-use cultivation facility?
Right.
And also the manufacturing facility?
However, here's the broad view. We only have a certain window to get this in, because they need to make them all legal. We were running tight last time Denise was here.
Yep.
We kicked this one really too weak. Still has to have a public meeting, it's gonna have a public for us, it's gonna have a public for board. I totally understand that we need to get it right, a hundred percent agree with you, but I also think we need to get it done, because we've got to push this down the chain and err on time.
Is this something the same time, straight?
Yes. Part of my mouth. I believe it's up to Jeff.
I didn't think this one, I didn't think this one was just on a time constraint, just like the.
It is because of the licensing of that, of the other businesses, they're in, they're in violation, and the state said you've got to get them.
They're in violation of the statute.
Into code.
If we, again, if, because of the way the state law authorizes with cannabis. each town has to have an opt-in vote at town meeting for what they want to make legal. Madison opted into medical retail sales. But that's not in our ordinance. Our ordinance only says currently that we do not allow adult use. Because our ordinance does not say we allow medical, those, all the shops that are in town right now are operating legally.
Is it all illegal?
Per state law.
I thought we could let us.
I thought we could let us.
There's one, there's, there's one that was in under that line, you're correct. That was before the date change of the law. They changed this law and don't.
So how do they, how do they how do they establish business if it was all illegal?
Again, it was, it was a town error. No, it wasn't a town error. At the time, the legislature changed the law, put in the date.
The state did.
Informant one. And then when they did vote, and now during the licensing, relicensing, the state came out and said, they're in violation. And we all said, well, why did you change the law, me and the town? And they said, oh, we changed it in two thousand eighteen, but they never notified the towns that these had to be written. As, as, that's, I'm recollecting from what Denise has said.
That's him.
So, that's it.
The deadline is the new year to get this ordinance.
And if it doesn't happen?
Then the OCP will shut them down.
They're gonna get closed.
To the state law.
Yes.
Well, sounds like we ought to get it done.
Yeah, this is supposed to go to the vote at the same time as one seventy.
When is that? September, that's the time.
And we start to have a public hearing and and the select board has to do their thing.
So technically, if we can try to make final edits tonight, could we go to public hearing next week?
Two weeks. Two weeks, you're in.
Yeah, so let's get it done. So we know that for article one, we want to make it as succinct as possible. We want to cut down the definitions. We want to make sure the references are to adult use in this one.
Yeah. Because that's what we're regulating.
Yep.
And as long as that doesn't allow any other cannabis establishments, I think we're accomplishing what the town wants us to accomplish.
I'll go back through these definitions too and make sure they're correspond with the state definitions and get them as succinct as possible.
Let me ask you this, and we edit this right now. Cut everything after one eighty oh two. Don't define it, don't get into it. Adult use pursuant to the law is not appropriate for facilities in Madison. Stop it at the purpose. We're not even giving them the room to arbitrate it. It's done.
So whether we do it or not, there won't be license? Is that what you're saying? And wicked lettuce is the only one that's grandfathered, is that what we're saying?
We're on, we're on adult use, that's medical. So all the facilities in Madison are medical.
And I think Mark's right, the more language we put in, gives them areas to find a potential loophole to do some kind of business. But we just say it's still illegal. It limits it down to none. If there's no, they can't find a hole in the language by this definition and.
So short and sweet then.
Yeah.
So what's our ordinance say right now? Not this one, but the one that's actually in force?
So everybody's cool with the medical, it's just the adult.
We haven't gotten to medical.
Right.
But I'm pretty cool with it.
They're all licensed to be medical, right? So.
Chapter one eighty is currently titled Drug and Drug Paraphernalia. It's, article one is retail marijuana establishments. Um, authority. It has definitions, so it's goes authority, definitions, retail marijuana establishments, and effective date violations.
So that's already effective.
So prohibition on retail marijuana establishments, social clubs, and retail gifting. So retail marijuana establishments, including retail marijuana stores, retail marijuana cultivation facilities. So technically now, under our current ordinance, again, those stores are operating illegally. Because we just have a wholesale ban on marijuana retail in the town of Madison.
Can we buy off the street in Madison? I have no idea, walk into one of these places and buy marijuana?
Not without a medical ID, a, a card, medical card.
So I listened to a guy the other day, he said that he was going to farming, fifty dollar sweeper over there. He was not from marijuana or whatever.
But that would be the adult use, not the, not the.
An adult or not, you can anywhere and buy marijuana.
Not without a medical card.
Not legally. How would?
I don't know, I can't get over that stuff.
But, that's what I'm saying, you know?
But what, you don't want to get selling to somebody without a medical card?
That'd lose their license.
That'd lose their license for, for medical, right?
Yep. It'd be very difficult for them to get another license in another town.
Right.
Yeah, the state won't issue it.
So why doesn't that almost do what we need to do?
The current one?
Yeah.
Again, it, it's prohibition on retail marijuana establishments. It doesn't define adult use, it doesn't define medical, it just has a wholesale ban on retail marijuana. Which, again, that completely is, it's not what the town opted in on.
Okay.
And that currently makes any of the retail establishments illegal.
Okay, even though, if they're medical?
Yes. Also, the current state and federal, like, laws regarding cannabis, use the terminology cannabis. So marijuana is kind of outdated.
Yes, okay, all righty. So don't propose them.
I'm asking.
Simplified.
Yeah.
I can, I mean, we can cut pretty much all of it out.
I mean, you could leave the definitions in, because it doesn't matter, but then I think after definitions, you know, one eighty-four and one eighty-five, which is one eighty-five could stay in. Where's the ambiguity? I mean, I guess the ambiguity is within the definitions, but I'm not.
You're just proposing that if we leave all of this in, they'll find a loop.
How about we leave in section one eighty dash four prohibition on adult use cannabis establishments and just simply leave it as adult use cannabis establishments are expressly prohibited in the town of Madison. Done. Okay?
What about edibles and whatever, cookies and brownies and tinsel, I don't know. What about all that stuff? How do you cover that?
That is all covered under this. Those are, technically would be covered under, um, manufacturing, I believe.
I would think manufacturing would be there, making them, not selling them.
Well, those are under the retail, adult use retail. So any retail establishment that is selling things as far as like when clones, plants, things like that, also, um, when you are describing cannabis products, I believe, that's not just including things like flour or like pre-rolled joints, that's also including edibles or tinctures or things like that. I'm just assuming.
Crabs?
Crabs.
So to get, say I want the lotion for my shoulder. I have to be having a medical license on, on now?
Unless you went to a recreation facility, an adult use recreational.
In Madison, you need a card.
However, there is also, there's CBD. If it has, there's CBD and there's THC. If you got a, if you wanted a THC product, you would need to go either to a recreational or a, uh, a medical, and have a medical card. But if you're getting CBD, that is not regulated in the same way, that is a different type. That's like sold at like smoke shops.
THC has the, uh.
Intoxicating.
Yeah, and CBD doesn't.
Why don't people in town, they have knee problems, they're problems, using those sobs, you know, whatever they call the stuff, lotion? They buy and they want lettuce. That's why I asked the question.
If they're buying it with the lettuce, who would they have a medical card?
My brother doesn't, he buys it for his, his child, shoulder.
CBD, CBD or THC?
Cannabis products also aren't regulated in this.
High test, low test, whatever.
High test, yes. Unletted.
So is everyone okay with those, that edit, making it very cut down?
Can you just repeat what you're going to?
So I'm going to leave everything else, but in section one eighty dash four, I'm going to cut everything else from that and just have one section that says adult use cannabis establishments are expressly prohibited in either this municipality or in the town of Madison. I'll probably go with in the town of Madison, just make it very clear.
And you're gonna put the effective date and all that out?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm gonna leave those two in. You're sorry?
You wouldn't, you wouldn't want to keep, uh, section eighty, manufacturing facilities, adult use cannabis testing facilities, adult cannabis use social clubs?
I kind of think if we leave all of those in the definitions, it may be a little redundant. If we're going through the trouble of defining all those in the definitions, I think it should be okay. But that's just my opinion.
Yeah, the lawyer's opinion would make, make a difference.
You just said there's two different kinds, this one with the.
The THC and then there's the CBD. The CBD doesn't have the.
That's cannabis, both of them, so I'd like to fall into that, that warrior's dilemma.
True. But you'd have to have a medical card for either one, correct?
Right, under the article one, you wouldn't be able to buy that, sell it in this town.
Even the CBD?
Even the CBD, under article one, under adult use.
Apparently his brother's buying it.
Well, technically, they're not even legal right now, right?
Wicked lettuce is.
Wicked lettuce is the only one, the rest are.
That's where he's getting it from.
Oh, he's getting it from wicked lettuce, huh? I'm with you though, when we talked last time, I think they'll just eat themselves.
I do too.
That's what happens.
They'll just what?
They'll eat themselves out of business.
I mean.
How many years has wicked lettuce been there now?
Well, since before two thousand eighteen.
And they're thriving from one eighty ten.
I don't think they're trying to do anything wrong, it's just that this is a gray area as we go talking.
So what we're trying to do is get this out the door tonight. Get it to a public hearing in two weeks. It has to go out to the public seven days?
Seven to ten days.
Seven to ten. So you can work your magic and then send it around for review. Can we do something like vote tonight? And say that, well, we.
Pending acceptance of the changes.
And we could do a email vote for acceptance?
I can probably get you the revisions by Friday.
That's fine.
Because we, you'd need to send it out Monday.
I can, yes.
Unfortunately, that gives Denise very little time to look at it, but I think it should be okay. Hopefully.
She's still on there. She's.
She's in the pool.
In the pool, but she's not responding.
She's still on, but she's.
Yeah, we need to move forward, we need to stop.
Yep.
Well, that's, that's article one, we still have to do article two.
That is correct, okay.
So dawn motion pending acceptance?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll take a second on that.
Great, great.
Thanks, I did.
Okay.
Then you do your vote.
Any more discussion? Very done, all is in favor? Good, thanks. Okay, article two. Anybody have any questions or comments? Okay, I got one. Yeah, I know.
I see it right here on there.
Oh, no.
So, under the purpose.
Yes.
The third paragraph, the operation of a medical marijuana caregiver within their primary residence or in the primary residence of one or all of its officers or managers is exempt from the licensing requirements of this ordinance. Does that mean we could have the three medical establishments, cannabis establishments that we're talking about? Plus we could have any number of home care?